Hey, man. How you doing?
Rose, give me one. She says so much.
Thank you.
I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
How you doing, sir?
How are you, sir? I'm good. How are you?
All right.
And this is why he's in my life.
You speak to him.
Okay.
He ain't gonna talk about it.
How you doing, sir?
Hey, I appreciate that.
Hey, please, man. Please, boy. Oh, yes, that's not. Well, a whole lot of you all the seed count stuff. All this is new. Yep. And I got all of this.
When he showed it to me, I knew that. But that's what I mean. That's what he was talking about. Yes, that's about seven days.
Hey, Joe.
How's it going, boss?
Hey, Joe.
Mind your way, Joe.
Am I missing something? Hello, sir. How are you?
I'm good.
What's up, bro?
Good, man.
What's up, bro?
What's up, man? Everything good?
Yes, sir.
Have you pulled motorcycle out yet?
Yeah. I, uh, I was messing with it last week. I gotta clean this.
That sitting's always tough on me.
Yeah, I'm ready to do it. As a matter of fact, I moved it out. Oh, a truck here. How you doing, man? Go home. Yeah, okay.
Joe, you trying to trip me?
No, sir.
Hey, tripping is what I go home, man. We said Chris did it. What you think?
I'm not.
My mate.
How you doing, sir?
What's up? You good?
Yes, sir.
It's more than us tonight. Well, you know, tonight is with me.
Joe, this might be just some people. Chris, you want some candy? Right.
I will absolutely take you up on that.
Sure.
Joe, you want some candy?
I got some going.
Might need some candy too, Joe.
Just go and go and do it.
Keep that sugar level up.
Yeah. Say, say what, man? Yeah, keep what, man? Yeah, I already got my marshmallow. You go any more quiet, open your mouth. I may go out the back door. I ain't gonna help you right there.
I am fixing your name quite. It's off kilter.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna call Bo Woody on this time.
I appreciate that.
Okay, we got another one, man.
If you have not signed in already, you're welcome to do so if you plan to speak during audience participation.
That's just for people speaking, not attendants?
Yeah, just, just people speaking. Is it seven o'clock? On the clock. The regularly scheduled Senate Council Board of Alder meeting for April 12th of 2022 is now called to order. Our invocation for tonight will be done by Bishop Jacobus Davis, the pastor of the Word Family Church here at two, two, seven, seven North Street in Camden, Arkansas. Will you please stand for our invocation?
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together and transact the business of our city. We thank you for our leadership. We pray that each of us would consider your will as we consider our city. We ask that you would lead us and guide us, and everyone present would consider one another as we walk in the love of Christ. We thank you, Father God, that your will is to be done, your kingdom on earth as it is in heaven. Show yourself mighty, strong, and God in us and through us as we go about this day. In his in Jesus' name, we ask this prayer and we redeem the Lord as our name.
Amen.
Will you please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. At this time, we will have our roll call by our city clerk, Ms. Donna Stewart.
Here. Laura.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Floyd.
Present.
Askew.
Here.
Lindsey.
Here.
Bill.
Present. Do we have a motion as it pertains to the minutes of our regularly scheduled meeting for March 8th of 2022?
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Eyes have it on the minutes of our regular meeting for March 8th of 2022. Do we have a motion on the acceptance of our financial report for March of 2022?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Those in favor use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the voting sign of nay. Eyes have it for the treasurer's report, for the financial report of March 2022. At this time, we're preparing for audience participation. Those of you who will speak, your name will be called by our city clerk. You have three minutes to come to the podium. The mic is on, but it's not for amplification inside of the room. It is simply to, for recording purposes. So when you come, please state your name and give your physical address, and you have three minutes of phone speaking.
Mr. Ed Winters.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we're with the office, 1141 Woodside Drive. Uh, three minutes, I have three topics, but I'm gonna go speak as a New Yorker and I don't. Uh, first, I'd like to publicly thank Chief Woody who's not here and Chief Nash and Mr. Woodside. And all those people who came out to volunteer three weeks ago during that terrible week. Our community came together that week and helped a family and fed the volunteers and fed the family. And I want to also include Bobby and Lauren in that, opening up the native dog for the family, for the classmates, and friends. That was so wonderful, what our, our community did that week, coming together to help. That's my first thank you. Second thank you is not as emotional as that. On Monday, March 28th, someone felt the need to dump, dump a mattress and box spring and other household goods on the west side of Fine Hills, on the west end of, uh, Woodside. About 7:30 in the morning on that Monday morning, I got a call about that. At eight, a little bit after eight, I called the sanitation department and spoke to a young lady and said, I would be willing to help if somebody would come down with a pickup. And she said, no need. She'll take care of it. I didn't expect it to be taken care of like it was. About 20 minutes later, I had to go to church. And I drove past that section where the stuff had been dumped. And there were two pickup trucks from the town and two young men from the sanitation department. In less than a half hour, they had that cleaned up. So I want to thank the sanitation department publicly. I already did it personally. Okay? Third item, and I don't know how much time I have left, but I think I've announced this before. On May 28th, we are going to have a Memorial Day parade downtown. I've already spoken to the county. They're all on board. I've spoken to the fire department. I've spoken to the police department, the high school. We've got the band, we've got the Beta, um, P Club, the ROTC, spoken to the VA. Mayor, I, I don't know if you want to be involved, but I, you know, this is a community, it's gonna be a Washtot County Memorial Day parade, but it's taking place downtown. Eleven o'clock, gonna start at the intermediate school, go up to the post office, make a right, go up to Adams, make a right, to Jefferson, make a right, everything is right. It's gonna stop at the courthouse. We'll have somebody sing the national anthem. We're gonna have a pastor say a prayer, and a wreath will be laid at that memorial, because I was on the north. This is something that should have been done a long time ago. It's gonna happen this year, and I'd like it to be an annual event. Flyers will be provided to downtown area, to the newspaper, to the radio. And, you know, I, I would love to get people out to enjoy, it's gonna be on the 28th, by the way, not Memorial Day, Saturday, the 28th, at 11:00. Okay? I didn't hear a beat, so I guess I'm gonna do that three minutes. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Marcus Copeland.
I'm Marcus Copeland, address 1303 Swanson Street, Camden, Arkansas.
My name is Ed Rice, Vice Chancellor of Student Services at SAU Tech, and I, I stay at 1075 Astec here in Camden. And today, we are coming before, uh, our Board of Alders into our constituents of Washtot County and Camden to let you know about our career fair that we're hosting in partnerships with O-FED, which will be held on April 26th at SAU Tech in our grand hall. And we're really excited about it, you know, again, it's been, how many years? Two years? It's been two years since we've had a, uh, an in-person career fair. Right now, Marcus, how many do we have?
Sixty-five.
We have sixty-five vendors that have signed up, which broke our record from the last time of sixty-one. So it's, and a lot of our vendors are really excited because they are looking to fill a lot of vacant positions. So we wanted to make sure we come before our Board of Alders and to our constituents here in Washington, Washtot County and Camden to let you know about this career fair. So we need your support. Please pass the information around in your, in your particular wards, so we can make sure we, uh, have this be very well attended. There are a lot of jobs that are out here. A lot of our vendors have indicated that they're looking for ten or more employees. So if we can get the people out, there'll be jobs and we'll be doing interviews on the spot. So we're really excited about it, and again, thank you all for the opportunity. Marcus, you got anything else you want to say? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Blades.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Lauren Blades. I reside at 1113 Fallberry Circle in Camden, but part-time I'm at 125 Madison Avenue. Uh, today, I want to read a letter that is a collaborative effort that Ms. Sherry's passing out to you as well.
Thank you.
Distinguished City Council members, considering y'all have chosen to serve on for our city's council, it's evident that you care a great deal for your community in our city. We're grateful for your service and continue to trust your diligence and good judgment with things concerning your constituents. Because of our confidence in you, we appear before you today as a collective body of concerned citizens requesting you act regarding the safety of our city and its people. As you're well aware, there have been numerous incidents of drowning throughout the history of our local river. Most recently, the life of a young man from our community was lost to such fate, and only a month prior, another life was taken in the same way. It's time we take back the safety of our citizens. With this in mind, we are here to propose the first step in establishing this safety. We request that a law is implemented in Washtot County for all access points, swimming areas, and boating excursions on the Washtot River. It's to be appropriately named Cooper's Law. This law will state that all persons must have an authorized location device appropriately attached before entering the water and must remain attached to the said device while in the water. signage will reflect this as well at all access points, reminding the public of the danger of the undertow of this relentless river. We also propose a rapid emergency report system at the Riverwalk at the Camden Port. I'm gonna let my eye. Bobby.
It should be in direct communication with the rescue authorities and emergency personnel and should be accessed only in an emergency and with deliberate actions as with a fire alarm. Life rings secured near the water and attached to an extension rope should also be a part of this emergency assistance area. The ring should be attached with a rope, with a clip, so it could be detached in case assistance is needed past the initial rope's extension reach. This location should be monitored via video surveillance with appropriate notification of such monitoring to deter false alarms. Offenders should be immediately prosecuted and are fined to a set standard of expected compliance. To ease the burdens for you, we have researched available options and have devised plans for all the above-mentioned installations to occur promptly. There are already voting laws in place to substantiate the need for water safety. It is our responsibility as the queen city of the Washtot to set precedents in the protection of our citizens, our children, and our legacy. We respectfully request the install, installation of Cooper's Law and will back all efforts to establish and carry out its progress. With our deepest regards, your citizens. We have also given out a water risk statistics flyer to show just how dangerous the water and this river can be.
And we've done a lot of the lead work and research into this emergency system. Sherry Steelman is definitely the brains behind the operation. As far as monetary funding, that's not an issue. We have multiple people willing to donate, fund, fundraise and support. We, we can't let this happen again. And we need y'all's support.
Any questions?
Attorney Frye? We would need to go to the, uh, uh, the, for the river itself, we'll, we'll need to speak with. We, we, I'd be willing to go with you to the people who are in charge of the river. We're only in charge of the beach, so I don't get to.
Yeah, we, we've already contacted them.
Okay, all right. Well, I'd be willing to stand with you when you go before the people who, who have the purview. We don't have the purview to do the things that you're requesting, but I would stand with you when you do. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Mr. Jesse Hooks.
Hello, gentlemen. I, uh, I'm the owner, I'm Jesse Hooks. I'm the owner of Starfire Smoke Shop here in Camden. Um, we have recently.
The address, please.
Yeah, 972 West Washington Street, Suite B, or sorry, Suite E, isn't Edward. Uh, we've recently had a, uh, a disagreement with the police department here, um, saying with high notes about our hemp products. They have come in and taken our hemp products, um, pretty much crashed my business over this, just this spring. So I am here not to disagree what they have done, but to educate, um, people as to what I was doing, what I am doing, what I'm gonna continue doing. I have a pamphlet here that I'd like to pass out. The pamphlet, uh, right at the beginning, um, states several stores within Arkansas that carry products like Kerry, um, that are all hemp-ridden. There are new products out on the market which have been confusing. There is Delta A THC, Delta 10 THDL, THCP, HHC, um, these are all hemp-driven. And, uh, they are all fully legal in the state of Arkansas in that opinion. The next pages are testing results. Uh, this is what testing results actually look like on CD. That we've, we received, they're signed from several, um, official people that have licensing letters. Camden Police Department told me Delta A was illegal here. But so many stores carry it, including here in Camden. We still have three stores carrying here in Camden. But for some reason or another, the city, or the Camden PD has come to my store and high notes and taken out dockets. This needs to stop, this needs to, this is back. Okay, that, I mean, this is fully legal. What I have been doing and what I'm gonna continue, because I have to keep my business going. So I hope that this council can look through these dockets and see the, uh, the bill that is attached to the back is your hemp bill um, here within Arkansas, uh, that states that, uh, uh, that the maximum allowed THC content is 0.3% THC by weight involved, uh, which I did, um, comply by. Um, and still continue to comply because it was Delta 9 THC and not just THC. So there are several different things within this hemp that's very confusing. There's lots of misinformation going around, and I'll be more than happy to answer any of y'all's questions.
May I have a question?
Yes.
Uh, on your pages two through, just understanding what you're presenting. Two, three, 11, that, there are strikeouts. Is that?
That's where the bill was changed.
Okay.
Uh, the bill went, uh, was originally changed, uh, made Delta A illegal within the state for just a moment. Um, then it was actually re, redone once again, and this is the newest format as to what the bill actually says.
So before and after?
Yeah, before and after.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, is there, I'm assuming that the police did what they do, there's gonna be a court date or something that this will?
Uh, I would, uh, uh, they have not filed a district order yet. But yeah, I, I hope that we can actually see a court over this because I've seen this issue before when I first put CD by the show. And I really wish there were a resolution on this matter so that the city and the Camden PD will keep my business alive and generate taxes. And I'm gonna continue generating taxes. I owe this to the taxes.
Yes, sir.
He's already looking at it. Where are we at with this?
Uh, well, it would have been, I think a lot of what he said is completely accurate, uh, as far as there's been a lot of misunderstanding about, uh, hemp products, it's certainly been evolving, uh, a lot of beneficial purposes to it, thank you. Um, so in this case, it would have been an affidavit for, uh, the warrant arrest would have been filed. So that would be based on the information gathered by the criminal investigation department. They take that to a judge, the judge reviews it, and the judge issues the, the judge issued the arrest warrant, and that, that gets the person booked in, he said he was arrested. Uh, but that was taken before a, uh, circuit court judge, a Williamsburg, uh, approved the affidavit for warrant arrest and believed it was probable cause and believed at that time, uh, that there was a crime being committed. Um, and that's gonna end up being settled in the circuit court. Uh, so I think as far as, uh, lab results, test results, that's really appropriate form for that, and, uh, that'll be adjudicated by the court, and then we'll have that in store for later.
Do you know the date of the court?
No. I think he's correct. The formal charge, charges have not been filed, or I, I believe that's correct. So, uh, when the arrest warrant is saw, what the detective does, they go to the judge and say, here's the information that we have right now. Uh, we get it conducted, and a lot of times we, we've conducted a, a buy or purchase at this establishment. We sent that item off and we tested. Here's the result that we believe came back from the laboratory. It will be places in this category of controlled substance. We're seeking an arrest warrant for that person. So at that point, there's nothing really pungent and not a formal case. The individual's arrested, uh, they are booked in, and that investigative file is sent to the circuit court prosecutor's office, where they review the file with the information. And then they take that and actually file it in circuit court and have an actual charging instrument that'll have a case number on it. So during that time, uh, well, in higher profile cases, you will see where, where somebody is arrested for murder first degree, they're arrested, and then when the charges are filed, they're filed for desert homicide or for something different. So at this point, uh, the case filed with the prosecutor, and then they review that file, and they actually file criminal information that sets forth the statute they believe you filed. And so that has not happened at this present time.
Attorney Frye, is it unfair to try to wait until a judge passes something to know? When I look at this, at the paperwork, I don't know how much of what number is the right number on the first couple pages. I don't know what numbers are correct, or if the institution who tested this is the institution that the state, because it's out of Florida, right? So is it fair to say that it would be in our best interest to see what a judge says first? Or does, is he's expecting us to stop something that I don't fully grasp right now?
Well, right, I, I mean, I think circuit court's the proper forum because you're gonna have competing laboratory results, is what's gonna happen.
Okay.
You gotta have some determination about what kind of substance was sold. Uh, you gotta have a determination of what the laboratory results of that substance show, and then you've gotta apply that to the law as passed the legislature to see what category falls in. So I mean, I, I think that's more than, uh, the city council can undertake, and it would really be, I mean, it's already in that branch of government to make a determination about its law enforcement.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, well, I, I guess I would say the city council always has the right, or the mayor always has the right to, um, either work with the chief of police and determine, um, the appropriateness of, uh, of our assets and our resources being used for certain types of crime. So some cities, so, so the council still has the right to say, well, is this a top priority? How much resource do we want to spend on something like this? I guess I would say that's about as close as I can see the city council having involvement. The city council can't reach its hand into a criminal court case because that's already in a separate branch of government. So I don't think the city council can say, based on our review, we hereby pronounce you innocent, and you're free to go forth, young man, and you're fined. I mean, that's, we don't have that power. So, uh, the only thing I would say is if the city council were to undertake a review of hemp laws in general, uh, you know, you certainly could do that. And maybe sort of talk, talking to the, uh, police department about that with the chief, but.
Is the law that he gave us today, is that sufficient for me to study when I leave here? This is my, I mean, I've, I've heard of the case itself in the report, but I'm saying, is it fair to, to, to take this law? Is, will this be enough for us to look at? I mean?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
I mean, I'll take this review, and I'm sure there'd be more. I think we have more. I've dealt with Mr. Hook before, he's always been cordial and been very cooperative, uh, provided assistance, information. So I think if we have questions for him, I think he would certainly be willing to provide insight and say, contact this person or here's where I get my information from. But it's a, it's a very fluid and evolving area of, of the law. Um, and, and, but for right now, I mean, there's certainly at least an affidavit probable cause that was approved that, uh, had at least one arrest warrant, and I believe it may have been a second one, uh, that had to go before a judge. And that is not, I would, that is not a finding of guilt. And so certainly, if, if Mr. Hook stands here before the council, he is presumed innocent until a, either a jury or court determines otherwise. So even though an arrest warrant is issued, that doesn't mean someone's guilty. That's just a way of getting them out of the forecourt, uh, a common jurisdiction that can review all the issues, look at both sides of it, and make a finding. So arrest warrant is not the same as someone being guilty. Now, it's a little bit unusual in that, uh... Now, it's a little bit unusual in that, from Mr. Hook's standpoint, you know, whatever he says is, is public record. So it's unusual to have a criminal defendant in a case wanting to speak to the public about it. But I'd say that's certainly his, his right, but, but I believe he has a legal counsel. And so it's unusual to have someone in a criminal case coming before a, a council to say, oh, I want to talk about my case. But I don't believe, I'll walk the city council and certainly can't reach into his case and, and make a findings. Because that's before the circuit court, that judge has to make that determination.
Can I say something? I'm not here to really worry about what's happened. I'm more worried about what's going to happen, what the future holds. So if I put this stuff back on the shelf, am I going to be prosecuted again? That's my biggest issue.
Yes. I don't know, I come down and I speed, I get pulled over, officer tells me, you're speeding over twenty-five, it's a school zone. And I said, I disagree, and he says, you can come to court and fight it. And I come back the next day, I come see him, he gives me a speedy ticket, says it's speeding until twenty-five, until I go to court. In my mind, I'm fixing to try and not put myself in that position. Because we, we don't have the facts of the case, the voice, but there was certainly enough to seek an affidavit for, or to file an affidavit and obtain a warrant for arrest. And if that activity continues, I would anticipate another affidavit being prepared and being submitted to a circuit judge for another warrant for arrest. Until, until a court says, you know, the law has changed, I mean, that's, that's just how it works.
You, you answered a couple of my questions in your explanation there. I was just concerned with, so everything's based off the analysis. I notice most of them are from New York, Florida, so there's an Arkansas set criteria for this.
Correct.
And, and the reason I ask, I go in a lot of stores and, and a lot of them are selling at that. I don't, I don't know much about the analysis of whatever the case might be. And, and so that was my main concern. And the second question you asked was if he does go back in the middle, the same criteria has it set?
Right, why, it, it's a fascinating, it's a fascinating area of research and a fascinating area of law. But, but I, I think what we're dealing with is unless something has changed from the time the previous arrest warrant was issued. I mean, if everything is still the same, and it's all the same basic circumstances, I don't see a different, you know, result. I think the only question would be to be sure. And that would basically be him or through his counsel to say, well, I would really like to continue my activity, and here's what I plan on doing. But if there's no change in circumstances, I don't see how, how it doesn't result in another, in another affidavit being sought because we've got the... You've got several steps, you want to determine what is being sought. So I guess you're going to have some that's prepackaged, you're going to have some that basically hemp flowered. So it makes a difference as, as whether you're dealing with, so when you go to store to store, I mean, that's going to be the actual facts from that particular case is what specific items are sold. And I don't have that, but that's just going to be, is what was the actual specific item that was sold? What category does it fall in? Why do you think it falls in that category? Which would be the testing results, or here's what's on the packaging, or this is what it says. But that's a whole lot to go through and get to before someone commits an evaluation and say, is this within the realm of legal?
Just one more question for him. Were you able to research the criteria in Arkansas, the state of Arkansas?
Yes, sir. That's the bill and that is all criteria in Arkansas.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address the gentleman's point that I think he's here to present, or what I, what I give is saying, the prosecutor's has to prosecute, has to file charges. I don't know what the normal timeframe is, but as he dragging his feet, is the police chief going to be able to go in there and raid him five times, waiting on the prosecutor deciding that he has a case? You're, you're almost at the same saying, I'm going to put him out of business, even though by not going, I'm not, I don't, the prosecutor doesn't have the goods to go to court. And so I'm trying to think now, I, I would guess that maybe we would have some input with the police chief about, or, or the prosecutor saying, you know, get us a court date, let's go and, and find out who's right or who's wrong, but don't be punishing, he, he's innocent to proven guilty. But if the prosecutor isn't willing to go prove him guilty, I, I, I'm thinking the, the police chief doesn't need to keep going to it. In, in my outline there?
Not out of line, and, and I probably have a lot of sympathy for that, but I would say that, that, that the analysis is incorrect somewhat. And that once an individual is put on notice that their activity is violating law, the individual is going to notice that, that at least the position right now, the last stated position of the state or the government is that it's illegal.
So how long do we wait for the prosecutor to put something up?
He probably has up to a year. He probably has up to, he's not being held in jail.
Question?
If he's being held in jail or on, at an open bail, it'd be sixty days. But he's not being held, we have no time, now. And I don't think it's been anywhere near any of that timeframe. So I do, I certainly think it's appropriate to verify what the time, time frame is. And, you know, we can certainly have communication with him. But I, I think that it is not a fair comparison that, that in general, if someone is engaging in criminal activity and they are cited for it or arrested for it, that they're on notice, that they engage in criminal activity. So I, I, I understand that maybe they're legitimately disagreeing and say, I want to find out the truth. But I guess it would be, I'm going to sell beer on Sunday out of my house. I think this is America, and I'm free to do what I want to do with my own house, and I'm just selling to my friends. Law enforcement comes and says, no, that's bootlegging, here's your warrant for arrest, we're going to, we're going to book you in, Mr. Fry, and we're going to get a charge filed. Now, if I want to continue to sell that Sunday, I think I'm putting that risk on myself.
But it's up to the prosecutor to actually prosecute, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's got time, that's right.
So again, you, you don't have a court date.
Yes, sir.
So, but we, we can't ask, well, we have, okay, I can.
But we can communicate and wire about it, yes. Like I said, that, that's certainly valid, and it is certainly valid for the mayor and the chief to have a discussion about, well, if we've had no charges filed, how long is that going to happen, what are we going to do in the meantime? What's your position, what do we want to do as a city in the meantime? And that, that, that's true going forward, I agree, I agree with that, I think that's, that's true.
All right.
Last question?
Yes, sir.
Just looking at him from a business owner, he's a business owner, he's prior to a business license. Did you apply for a business license here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, when, when he was arrested, did he, did they give him a criteria of what they found that was, that not met the criteria of Arkansas, or was it just a blanket?
I can't say.
And, and I'm looking at if maybe he knew that, or whatever he was charged with, basically he can say, okay, I'll stop this until I can meet the other criterias. I'm just saying, is that available to him?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's where I would say the difference between if there's some change in facts or circumstances, where someone says, okay, I have changed my business and I'm not doing A, B, and C, but I'm doing D, E, and F, and I want to get clearance for it. Yeah, there's a way to go through and say I'm doing something different, but if it's just, we disagree, and I'm just going to do what I think is right, and I'll be vindicated eventually.
Sure, I'm agreed.
I think they're taking a little bit of risk on themselves, but there is a way to say, what part did you have a specific problem with? You know, isn't shelf A, B, and C? Are you okay with D, E, and F? There may be a way to get there and say, well, I didn't have a problem with it. But I don't have that in the circuit court, so I don't have any information.
So we'll have to wait on that one then. I appreciate your stopping by, there is something I think I can do, and so I'll check on what I can.
And I thank you all for even just listening to me, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's the last one.
All right, so thank you so much. We're ready for the mayor's report. On the day, we have the Washita Partnership for Economic Development, his first item. I'll give my report again.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. It's always a pleasure to appear before you and give you a little bit of a rundown on some of our activities this past year. I've given you each a, a handout, and I'll run down this list, Mayor, if you're going to indulge me. As everybody here should know, Washita Partnership for Economic Development is our lead economic development agency for Camden and Washita County. It's a partnership between the city of Camden, Washita County, Camden Area Chamber of Commerce, and Camden Area Development Corporation. It was created back in, I believe, two thousand and one. And initially funded with a city sales tax, and that tax expired in two thousand and five and was not renewed. So we've been existing on funds from, from those remaining tax funds. And most recently, the last about four years, so Washita County Point Four has stepped up and also provided us with funding. But I'm going to give you a, a brief rundown. This covers the period of January of two thousand and twenty-one to current time. We operate, in our offices at Oped, something called CABS for short. And CABS stands for Camden Accelerated Business Services. This is a free service that we're able to provide to people that are interested in starting a business in Camden and Washita County. And we contract, we provide the service through the Arkansas Small Business and Technology Development Center from SAU and Magnolia. And as past a year or so, they've provided small business counseling and assistance to sixty-five clients, three hundred and twenty-three hours of consulting, all free or charged. Total capital investment obtained by these clients in Camden with assistance was one million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand. Now, some of that money involves COVID money, Mayor, council members, so they, they assisted businesses with requiring COVID grant relief money, well. And, and they assisted six businesses that were created or purchased. And they provided nine small business training seminars. And you have some information in your handout on, on the activities there. Our office, Oped, participated, I did, with sixteen conference calls with prospects. Met with twelve prospects, delivered five information packages to prospects, and participated in thirty-four Zoom workshops and meetings, and attended fifty-two in-person meetings, or on-site meetings. I've met with ADC project managers on projects and coordinated site visits with the state office with prospective projects and prospects. Our most recent visit was just last week on April fifth and sixth, we had a prospect in that we prepared for and met with. Represented Oped and team Camden at the Arkansas Aerospace and Defense Alliance Annual Meeting in June in Fort Smith. And the Arkansas Economic Developers and Chamber Executives Annual Meeting in August in Jonesboro. I served on the Golden Triangle Economic Development Council, which is a regional economic development council. Washita, Calhoun, Columbia, Union Counties. And I attended the Arkansas Good Roads Foundation Meeting, Annual Meeting in November, on behalf of Golden Triangle Economic Development Council. In January, week twenty-one, we organized and worked with SAU Tech COVID vaccination clinic at the request of Area, Area Defense Industries. And we held that at SAU Tech. An initiative that we've undertaken, and this is in your packet also, is we have begun, and we attended the ACT Work Ready Communities Zoom Bootcamp in January, and our team from Washita County successfully completed the camp. Now, we're working towards national certification as a work-ready community for Camden and Washita County. There's a lot of hurdles and steps, hoops that you have to jump through to complete this process. Process is ongoing, and, and it will be an effective marketing tool for our community once completed. There's information in your packet on the work-ready program and our certificate of completion on that. And we're getting close, they have a national website, and Camden, Washita County are now recognized on that national website as working towards national certification. SAU Tech was here earlier, we're, we're assisting them on the career fair that they're going to have on April twenty-sixth at the school. Workforce is an ongoing issue that not only Camden and Washita County is dealing with, but it's a national issue. We feel it more closely because I deal with it on a day-to-day basis and probably you do too. So with this ACT, a work-ready communities, national career reading, this certificates, certification, we feel like this will assist us and give me another tool in our toolbox that will help us market our area and our community that we're, we're work-ready and we're certified and we're ready to put people to work. One of the first things that a prospect asked me is, if we bring this project to Camden or Washita County, are you going to be able to provide us with workforce? And gentlemen, I don't, I don't turn any prospect away. We entertain all covers and, and, and until we exhaust those leads. But workforce is an issue. We have jobs available in, in our area that remain unfilled. So I put the best place forward on it, whenever a prospect asks me, are you, are you going to be able to help us man our facility? And I always, my standard answer is yes. Given enough lead time, we will work with you and work with SAU Tech to get you some, some, some workers in your facility, whatever it may be. It might be a five-person facility, it could be a hundred-person facility. But that's one of the first questions I'm always asked, can you help us man our facility or our business? Beyond work readiness, we've marketed, we continue to market our community in national trade publications, Trade and Industry Development, Arkansas Business Magazine, and Arkansas Love Where You Live, which is a magazine published biannually that's published by the Arkansas Economic Development Commission, Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage and Tourism, and the Governor's Office. This, this is the publication. Camden, for whatever reason, hadn't been in this publication recently, but I was determined this past year that we would be in there. And you have a copy of this ad in your handout. And Camden, we took out Oped paid for a full-page ad. This is used as a recruitment tool and a marketing tool to recruit and market Arkansas by those entities, the Arkansas Economic Development Commission, Tourism, and the Governor's Office. So I felt like it was important that we have a presence in there, so we're there. You have copies of the other ads also in your packet that we've drawn recently. We've hosted numerous business training and community meetings in our offices at no charge to the users. Airjet Rocket Nine uses our training room every month for about four days, a, a week. And they train an average of about thirty personnel and workforce training. We organized last month an airspace and defense industry appreciation event with the area of airspace and defense companies, SAU Tech Highland Industrial Park. And it's held at SAU Tech after the request of ADC and the Governor's Office. And we had over five hundred people attend that event at SAU Tech. As I've already mentioned, I'm working with SAU Tech on a career fair scheduled for April twenty-sixth, dotting office manager and I. And currently, I'm working on eight active prospects, three retail, three industrial, one supply chain prospect, and one housing prospect. Now, I'm going to take a little bit of liberty and, and tell you, I'm, I'm not here to announce a major project, but we're getting very close. And the mayor is aware of which project I'm referring to because he met with the prospect last June in my offices and along with others. I talked to the prospect this morning and asked him what I was at the liberty to disclose. And I can tell you that this prospect, it, it will be a major investment in their facilities and equipment. in their facilities and equipment, the likes of which I would venture to say Washita County and Camden has never seen on the dollar map. I will tell you this. He has provided me documentation that gives me confidence that the financing for the project is moving forward. He's got what I would call some heavy hitters involved and signed on to finance the project. And he's provided a confidential documentation to me to that effect. It's in my files at the office. And the last thing that I will tell you is this prospect has and is investing money in the project. And they have invested money in a site, a significant amount of money, in a location here in Washita County for the project. And I have seen the proof and the evidence that the money has been invested and is in a trust account at one of our local financial institutions. So that gives me a lot of confidence. And I will tell you this, my first contact with this prospect was in two thousand and eighteen. That's how long some of these projects take to pan out, if you will. But I've worked with this prospect since two thousand and eighteen. And I am cautiously optimistic that we are very close, very close, to a positive announcement in the coming weeks. And with that, I'll conclude because I know y'all have a lot of other business on your agenda.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
The gentleman. So awesome presentation and wanna say thank you for everything that you're doing, all that you've done. And I know you go after the defense industry and missile industry and everything like that, but I'm being asked by, you know, different constituents and different people in the city. You know, they're looking at the surrounding area growth, El Dorado, Magnolia. And, you know, they're asking about different restaurants, different things for, to do in the community. Is that in your wheelhouse? Do you go after businesses like that as well?
Alderman, I ask you to touch on your question. This prospect that I'm talking about is non-aerospace and defense related. I'll go so far as to tell you what industry it's capitalizing on an asset, a raw material asset that we have here in Camden and surrounding Camden and Washita County. And that's the timber industry. And so that's a non-aerospace and defense-related industry. I'm working on some retail prospects. I'll be so bold as to say in the fast food sector. I have worked on other retail prospects. And sometimes these leads don't pan out because you don't have a building they're looking for or the location and pricing right for the land. And those are things Alderman asks you beyond my control. All I can do is try to bring it to the table and find out what their wants and desires are and try to find that. If somebody's not willing to, and I'm not saying this is the case, but, you know, the price has to be right or you've got to find an existing building that suits the needs. But yes, to answer your question, we're pursuing other avenues other than airspace and defense. But airspace and defense right now, people will tell you that the statistics will prove that most of your job creation comes from your existing business and industry expansion, not chasing these big projects like I'm referring to tonight, but supporting and endorsing your ongoing businesses that are investing and expanding in your area. So we do, we do a little of it all.
All right. Anyone question? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Your time's up. Good seeing you.
Next on the agenda is Camden Downtown Network yearly report.
Thank you, Mayor. And City Councilman wanted to let us come before you tonight. And I'll spend a lot of time. This is our second year of the Main Street Program. And we are excited again about what's happening downtown. We're very happy with what's going on. We continue to have ribbon cuttings. We've had five, six people before you last time. We have another one scheduled for last Saturday of this month. Hopefully, we get some new vibes. They're opening up where the picture shop was, home in Washington. Some place to come out that Saturday at fifteen P M to welcome them to downtown. And we're working with some more. I have an appointment set up later part of next week with a new business that is looking at a space downtown. We had our breakfast fixer. We gave out twelve grants this year. No, thirteen grants, I'm sorry, but twelve thousand dollars. Got the numbers for the backers, which will amount to almost one hundred thousand dollars in improvements within the downtown community. You can see several of those have been completed at this time and others are wrapping up within the next few weeks. We did establish an organization, a branch of our organization called Camden Young Professional Network, which does try to target younger members of the community such as those young persons that come into the defense area, medical community schools, et cetera, to network them into Camden so they can learn about our community, they can find out volunteer opportunities. And when they make people, might get you over the side of the sky in our community and live here and raise their families. We've hosted several events downtown that have been very beneficial for our businesses. It's brought people in to buy businesses such as more accounting and tax service. When we did our chocolate lover's throw, many people did not know she was located down there in Washington. She was able to talk to those people, tell them about her services. Through those, we were highlighted through Channel Eleven coming to town, Channel Ten, and also with A Y magazine, you know, a little various times to be the place to be within our state. We have partnered with other organizations. Main Street Arkansas being in, giving free consulting work to our businesses, to new ones coming in. We've worked with Windlock Foundation. We've hosted educational workshops on opportunity zones. And like I said, we're continuing to work with potential entrepreneurs. And if we can't find a building, I know Austin Linsen knows. I've called him or Mr. Tang, whoever it takes, because if it's for Camden, we wanna keep them here. But we will look at alternatives too because, you see, we now have bills and dimes. And at first Friday, we were able to debut the Headbangers Creamery, which is our new ice cream truck that is within downtown. So we're going strong. This Thursday, we're inviting everyone at five P M to nail chain Dawson Park because Main Street Arkansas is coming to town to award, give us an award for work that is done here. Thank you very much. Best for your continued support. Does anyone have any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. You will notice that we have our legislative joint audit, our legislative audit report tonight. When we received it, we responded properly to the items that were presented to us. And so I wanted to acknowledge that we did respond to the issues that we had and we have attended. We actually went in and myself, Attorney Frye, as well as our city clerk, went to the hearing this year. And I wanna say thank you to them. We acknowledge that that report exists. Over the last month, we've had some promotions as well as other ceremonies at CPD. We've had some issues. And Attorney Frye has been helpful in working on a resolve with River Valley as we've been dealing with some things over there. We've attended several meetings at planting a seed. As was mentioned earlier, this month, we've also had the opportunity to go to S A U Tech to be with Governor Hutchinson as well as the defense industry there. We attended a criminal justice roundtable with the county and also spoke for the Magnolia Community Awareness Council. We've had lunch with Mr. John, if you'll allow me to say, from Highland Industrial Park. And we've been working on some things as it pertains to the, with the fire department. We've also had the opportunity to do the Adopt a Street with, for, in honor of Reverend Stefan Avery Senior. We attended the Arkansas Municipal League this past month. We signed the Teen Town Grant. We also had the opportunity to work with the community in Pratt Vigils and in some other areas that helped to build community. The A M P, we attended the A M P meeting. We had a ward workshop. We attended some ribbon cuttings, particularly Super One Foods. We were able to go over there. We've had a watershed meeting. Just last Friday, we had the Intergovernmental Council Meeting. I met on today with Ms. Abbott and S O S D for a youth grieving counseling session that we plan to have soon. And in this room on the day, Girl Scout Junior Troop Two-Four-Four-Eight of Harmony Grove and Camden met with us as they're working toward their bronze award. And on April the twenty-second, which is Earth Day, they're going to be working on the trace and cleaning up some areas over that way. And so we're very happy about them and their service project. Those are some of the things that we were able to do over this past month. And we are grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve you. Next item of business is old business, and we have now ordinance two-twenty-two. Who will present, who will introduce it for the third?
Ordinance number two-twenty-two and ordinance of the City Council, the City of Camden, Arkansas, modifying the boundaries for the election of Alderman, approving the rediscipline of city warrants and for other purposes.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance two-twenty-two with the option four, ma'am.
The actual...
Well, I would say, I think, so I don't think the ordinance that it stands has an option. So I think it'd be a motion to approve just to discuss it. And I think it'd be a motion to amend, say motion to amend and add option four. If that makes sense. And that'll get you the same vote.
And the one that I did, it was option two, right?
Yeah.
Ma'am? Mine was option two, and that was the one that I recommended. So we would be changing.
Right. That's why I say the motion to amend, the motion to amend. He said motion to approve. I think it's a motion to approve just to have a discussion. And then it would be a motion to amend and make it option four.
So I second that motion to approve. That way we can discuss it.
Before we start in discussion.
No, sir. We were trying to get the motion. First, we were establishing what the motion is. And then we're gonna get ready to go into discussion. So we have a motion to approve ordinance number two-twenty-two. And now we have a second to approve ordinance two-twenty-two. Now we get to go into discussion. All right. So this is the third and final reading. And I haven't, I saw you when you presented your new one to everybody else today, but you didn't give me one of the new ones. But I still stand by number two. Well, when you gave it to them, you told them what you were doing too.
Wait a minute. We got a new one tonight?
I thought there was one that you...
No, I didn't get it.
Where are we at with this motion on the board?
We're in for discussion.
It's a motion to approve and a second. Just making it interesting to continue to discuss.
This is the only section that changes on Street. It's North Street by the scrap metal.
I have some questions. I have some questions.
On option two.
In option two, that was the last, I guess, the information I got at the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
And my understanding that we were researching on the option two that I had received. Tonight, I got the option four here on Ward Three, which I wasn't aware of, which I know Representative Ward Three. I'm just kinda confused what we had on these options and these wards now.
All right. So what happened was I brought in options one and two. They were not satisfactory to the board. And when they weren't, I said, well, would you be willing to bring one? Because the numbers said something had to be done. When you look at the bottom of them, you'll see that the numbers look real bad at the bottom. So of the original?
Yes, I looked at the original.
The phase one?
Yeah.
So with phase one, we weren't supposed to continue with those numbers because they became red in this particular one. So I went and I contacted E F S, who's been doing everybody else's. And they gave me options one and option two. I think Alderman Lenzit led in going to get an option number four. And so if there is a three, I don't know it, but he went and got option number four. I was the actual one that I presented with option number, was the option number two. And that's what this particular ordinance is, is number two, that we're talking about right now. And tonight, when we came in, he handed out to different people option number this one. And so I was asking him that if he was going to, if he was presenting it, I wanted to see the one that he was giving to other people because he didn't give me a copy of it. And I'd like to at least see it before we move forward. And then I didn't get it, and he didn't get it. But that's how we got here. The option, right now, we're on option number two until something else happens. Yes, sir.
Well, and the reason I didn't give you one the last time I presented you something, we were down at the City Hall or at the OPEAD building, and you took offense to my coming up to you that way. So I went on around. But my proposal here, and I handed this out last week or at our last month's meeting, but it was just a black and white map. I didn't have the color print on it. And I thought, well, it really makes it a lot easier to look at when you see it in the colors of the Ward Three versus Ward Four. And what I looked at, and they're gonna say this at the last meeting, was the discrepancy in the population count was in Ward Three and Ward Four. Ward Three was like a hundred and twenty people under population. And Ward Four was like sixty-five over the average. And I said, well, gosh, all you gotta do is shift about sixty-five or seventy people out of four into three. And then they're all within a one or two percent margin of differentiation. And so I spoke to the gentleman over there that does this mapping. He knows how many people are on each street. And I said, if you'll pick this thing just north, on the north side of North Street, on the west side of Mount Holly Road, and that's right around there where the scrap metal place, across the street from the scrap metal place. I said, I don't know how many houses are in that area. But I said, you've got the numbers. Pick it out and move sixty-five or seventy people from Ward Four into Ward Three, and everybody else is lying, stay exactly where they are. Everybody else kinda know where they are. And it looked like that's the easiest fix. And I thought, well, somebody might be working on an option three. So I said, call mine option four. And so anyway, so he drew me a map, sent it up here. And like I said, this is the little color printout that shows that there's about seventy people, I think, approximately, that he moved out of Ward Four that would have been right there on the, right there at North Street and across from Scrap Metal Place. And it shifted them into Ward Three, and everything works out pretty easy.
But here's the question though. If you notice at the bottom of your sheet here, there's no deviation. So I'm having to take your word that there's seventy people. But on this one, it shows you the numbers of deviation. So I don't have to trust anybody. I can just look at the numbers on this one. The numbers at the bottom on this one, the numbers at the bottom on this one, the numbers at the bottom. But the one you just gave me has nothing but says, believe me, it's just seventy people.
Approaching, if you looked at the ones that he sent to you, here's the copy that shows the option four what county is. And I just handed... And I just handed them out at the last meeting.
You, so you're saying that this is, that I'm looking right here at the same one as I'm looking at right here? The only difference is this one's color.
That one is just for the, the, the ward breakdown, that one is the whole city breakdown. It has the analysis at the bottom.
So these are the same maps, right?
This is a portion of the overall map. It's, you know, it's broken down, you have each ward that has a, a, a copy that says Ward one, Ward two, Ward three, Ward four. That's the Ward three copied there.
He draw it in.
But, but it's the uh, what he sent me here, this shows the breakdown with the numbers. And you can see that there's uh, very minor uh, differences, all over under two percent. And if you remember, the state rule said if you're under ten percent variation, that's considered normal.
The, the, the number of ten thousand six hundred and twelve divided by four would be two thousand six hundred and fifty-three. That was um, that was the, that was the magic number that we were trying to, to work with. Is there any more discussion on two, our ordinance two twenty-two?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And I, I got a headache out of this for the last one. First of all, uh, let me just say, I had to go back and do some research on this jury mandarin. I understand it pretty well and why it was put in place. I understand about the population shifts here in the city of Camden. And I asked a question, if you remember at the last meeting concerning this deviation and the algorithms they used in order to get this. Uh, did it translate into registered voters? And I was told that it did. It, it's a population vote, one man per vote. Were all these people, are they registered voters? And I got out and, and my feet so far in the last couple of weeks. Everybody's not a registered voter, even though they live within that ward. Some was, was basically based off children. And, and I, what I'm looking for here is a fairness uh, in trying to get this thing to a point to where we all can live with it. And, and, and that's my goal here. Uh, the, the deviations, forty, fifty people here and there, they're not registered voters, it don't affect you anyway. And, and, and you know, at the end of the day, if I can't run on my record, I don't need to run. Based on what I've already done. And, and if I can't, that's okay with me. It does, I, I'm, it's not my life story to sit here at this table. But as long as I'm here, I'm gonna try to do it fairly and I'm gonna try to do it to the best of my ability. But I, I had, I had issues with, with two, I had issues with four. And, and I went back and took the original documents I had from the last census because this wasn't a good census anyway. And that's just my opinion and the overall census from the federal government. And I went back and did the research and, and I said, well, we in a better place than where we are right now with the way they are set up. Now, everybody's concerned about, I got four blacks, I got four whites. I'm not concerned with who I sit up here with, I'm concerned that I bring quality people with the integrity of this city. And you might not like what I say sometimes, but I speak from the heart. At least you know who I'm gonna speak about. And I'm gonna try to be as fair as possible I can be. And this is not a time for us to fight over every little old piece of stick or yard of dirt that's out there. Cause we don't have a lot of yard of dirt right now, Camden is declining. I'm looking at it. So we don't have the impact that we used to have as per, per population. But that doesn't mean we need to go back and try to invent the wheel. And that's all I got to say about it. I'm not, I, I didn't see a, I didn't see a real influence of two on me awful. And I just looked at the original documents I had from the original census, which was go back to two thousand and ten. Now, yeah, that was some deviations. There were algorithms used to change some of that. And the numbers matched up to, like you said, basically I had two, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three. But they weren't all registered voters when I went out there and knocked on doors. Thank you, sir.
Alright.
So does anybody have something with your address in the map? So I think Alderman Lindsay handed this out, does anybody have this one?
This may have been the last month?
Right.
Does that have the?
Right, so this, cause this is the overview, I think the question is that, that the colored version you handed out tonight is just showing Ward three.
It showed Ward three so that I could identify this small two streets that where the population.
That's the only thing that's identified, that's the only thing with the document. And, and but on this one you handed out previously.
It has the, the bottom numbers.
Look, so this is Ward's overview, phase one.
Correct.
Okay, so this is going to be um, as we're existing right now, I mean, it's got the, the latest census. Now, it's not going backwards and doing different census numbers.
It's, it has a twenty.
I mean, I think I hear some people arguing about, well, what are we at right now? You didn't do anything, this is gonna have your numbers here. Not the ones that are written in, but down here. The problem is you rewrote, you wrote on this, but this is actually the correct overview numbers.
Now, this was as is right now, right? That, that's not, that's not the one.
Right, and, and not, not with your changes, it's a little bit confusing.
This is, this is the one with the overview that the gentleman provided with the new map. Once he changed those numbers, you'll see that's a minus two percent. Over here it's a minus four, almost five percent.
Well, but if we wanted to see, where are we at right now?
Yeah.
Even, even though it says drawn on it, they got changed, but the actual typed in number.
Deviations are still there.
This, this is where we're at right now.
Yeah, if you, if we didn't change a single line, that, that Ward three is minus almost five percent, a little less than five percent. And Ward four is over whatever that percentage.
Well, anyway, I think that's important just that everyone's looking at the deviation figures on option one, option two, option four. But you need to also know what are the deviation numbers just as we stand right now.
As we stand right now.
If you don't do anything. So I think that's contained on uh, this handout that's from last month. Even though it's got drawn, it's got some handwritten drawings on it. But the actual statistical numbers on the bottom are not from the drawn in part. They're from what we actually have right now.
Since I didn't have a color printer to print those out, I was having to use my magic marker to outline them.
Well, but that was just reference as far as where we're at now. I'm just saying, we do have a document that shows where we're at right now, no actual state.
So, right, so, and, and what the reason, I, when I, when we looked at this one, it has the uh.
That's option two.
And this, no, this is phase one.
Okay.
This is what we'll be stuck with if we don't do it. He read from the Civil, no, the Voting Rights Act of sixty-five, I think it was, when he showed us what the criteria was and how to draw them. And when I saw this one being drawn all the way up the side and the others being drawn east to west, it would have been questionable in one of the four, one of the four things I think we could probably raise a question saying, well, why wouldn't we make them kind of look, look alike? So that's why in option one, I tried to make them go east to west instead of drawing them all the way up the side of the map. Uh, and this one is east to west a little better than that one. But number four puts us right back where we were. We're drawing it up the side of the map instead of running it east to west.
Basically using the main street arteries as dividing lines.
Right.
You live north of Washington or south of Washington and east of Mount Holly Road or west of Mount Holly Road. Makes it easy to tell people where to vote.
That's right. But now we, the, where we're voting is not really as big of a deal because we don't vote at a, at a whole lot of places. We don't vote at many places.
It's not where you vote, it's who your representative, it's what their, what their ward is.
Right, and what I'm trying to do is allow the representative, I'm trying to allow the citizens to choose who represents them instead of the representative to choose who their voters are. So I think that it's more important that the people choose their, their representative. Does that make sense? Instead of us saying, this is who I know will vote for me, so this is where I want to be. We need to let the people say, this is who I believe will represent the best interest of our community. Alright, is, is there any more, is there any more discussion?
I, I, I just want to say this and, and you know, we can all agree to disagree. And um, I mean, we live where we live and the people stay where they stay. And that's who gonna vote for us or against us. Now, um, you know, Marvin, I'm taking me, I, out of the equation.
You have to.
I uh, um, um, have been on the phone, I've talked to some constituents and everything and asked them what do they like, you know, uh, they've called me. And asked, you know, okay, well, I like this, well, why do you like that? And, and that's what I'm here to represent tonight. You know, I mean, it's not about me and what I want. It's about what the constituents want.
I make a motion to amend ordinance, whatever the type it is.
It's ordinance, it's ordinance two twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
To install option four as opposed to option two.
I'll second it. Can, can I uh, make a, ask a question of Mr. Fry?
It's been moved and seconded, we're ready for discussion.
Uh, wasn't there part of the Voter Rights Act that talked about continuity and not completely uprooting uh, previous wards and, and trying to keep things where we disrupt the people as little as possible?
Right, uh, but it, it could be maintained towards the existing districts where uh, practical, it's a big general occasion, the shapes of existing districts uh, is a common register to the principle. So, so when you're redrawing districts, you're taking into consideration what previous districts are in. And I think we had complaints or had some citizens said, well, they weren't sure where the districts were at and we need to do a better job of, of informing the public of where the districts are. And I think my comment was, you know, we got these maps, they've been up here for a long time, get a new one. And, and you wouldn't come in every ten years and just go from scratch and just say, okay, we totally revamped everything. Because that isn't, that is a legitimate goal, is that people are used to, I'm south of Mount Holly, I'm in Ward four. And, and that's where they've been for thirty years and you try and, try and affect as few people as possible. Even though you could conceivably, let's say you redraw the maps and you had uh, you had the identical twenty-six fifty-five in each ward. But if you drew a completely separate map with four different wards and you had no deviation and you had twenty-six fifty-five in each ward, you got perfect population, one man, one vote, no deviation. But you really wouldn't want to tell all twenty-six hundred and fifty-five people, whatever ward you voted in last ten years, they are the new ward. I mean, so you, so yeah, it's a legitimate goal to maintain the existing districts.
Thank you, sir.
So I, I think we're on discussion of the motion to amend and add four, what you already know about.
Alright. My position was still, I was hoping for number two, Ward two. And uh, I want to be uh, clear, I don't think you have a fear of that with so few people knowing where they vote anyway. And so many people who we're having to civically connect as Mr. Moore has mentioned earlier that a lot of people, we gotta get registered anyway, so there's some of them be new voters. Got some people turning eighteen years old. And I think that some of our fears can be canceled by just trying to do things uh, as right as we possibly can at this point in history. If we drew those maps with the desire to have four blacks and four whites, that shouldn't have been what we did. And if that's what we did and why we did it, that was wrong to do at that time. I think it'd be wrong to continue with that type of mindset, but to just draw maps in a fair way and, and move forward knowing what we know now. Alright, uh, we have before us a, a motion to amend.
Is it a roll call, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Argued?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Phil's not here, Lindsey?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
It's, it's not here. So, passes with six.
Is that um?
Make a motion to approve or?
It's the amendment. That was just the amendment.
Yeah, I know, I made.
It's the amendment, so, so.
Motion to amend.
A motion to approve as amended.
And uh, it's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, I just want to state again for the record that I believe that option two is the best option for our city at the time with the knowledge that we do have. Alright? Roll call.
Argued?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Resolution number twenty twenty-two. Introduced by Alderman Lindsay.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two, a resolution of the city council, the city of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Washita Partnership for Economic Development to provide certain economic development services for the city of Camden.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Moving seconded into discussion. Those in favor use, those in sign, this is for one hundred thousand dollars?
That's in the budget, this is just to, to do the contract.
Alright.
And that was my question, are we still? I was wanting to, no discussion?
No, I.
Well, we were in the discussion.
We were in the discussion when I asked, was that the one hundred thousand dollars?
So, so there was, so there was a hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
Right.
Uh, uh, but there needed to be a resolution authorized the mayor to enter, enter into a contract. So there's, there's basically a hundred thousand dollars set aside for economic development. That is not the same thing as set aside for Washita Partnership for Economic Development. That's just economic development expenditures for the city. So that could be a different, you could be some other uh, goal of, of economic development, but there is a hundred thousand dollars under economic development in the budget. And then this uh, would authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Washita Partnership for Economic Development to provide those services uh, for a hundred thousand dollars.
I think it's also important to note that when we were talking about retail and restaurants, our contract does not include retail and restaurant. Am I correct? The written contract, the written contract says you do not do retail or restaurant, so.
Unless this council approves.
But the written contract so far says that you don't do though. We talked about retail earlier and you said that you were doing retail. But our contract does not require you to do any retail, any restaurants, as written right now.
Uh, that's correct, it doesn't require me to do it, but I'm, I'm doing it anyway.
I was gonna say, it doesn't require us to fund it. That was the part that we got into before, was the, that we were funding that part.
And, and I think, I would say, uh, if I'm, if I'm British, I think that the uh, so the contract provides Obed is authorized to recruit and market to prospective retail professional business prospects as well as supporting the expansion of existing retail professional business in the city, period. So I think that's authorizing Obed and exempted direct settlement to recruit and undertake for retail uh, and professional business. But the next line is what I thought Alderman Lindsay was talking about, all incent, all incentives requested for retail professional development shall be presented to and approved by the council. So if there's an incentive to be paid, Obed has to come back to the council and say, we're proposing an incentive to retail. But as far as marketing to retail, contacting retail, recruiting to retail, I think that is part of the contract. You agree?
Alright, because at the very beginning, when I, when I came in, we were trying to do some of those. And it was explained to me at that point that it was not. And I was real heavy about trying to get some different restaurants in. We were pretty much at one grand a restaurant, pretty much at that time and I was trying to get it done. And when I couldn't get past a certain place, it was explained to me at that time that they were not, that that was not there. Okay, so, but that, the way it's written now.
Discussion, but I would just say the contract allows the director to recruit and solicit and then try to pursue retail. It, it's the incentive portion that it does.